Good morning.
Good morning.
It is a great day. We're gonna get started. We have a quorum established. I ask the guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail with the exception of the guests that are sitting in the seats. Thank you all very much. Guys, hold quiet, please. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Jared Ayers, founding and senior minister of Liberty Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman O. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was asked by Councilman O. to make a brief remark and pray. I told him making a brief remark is a dangerous thing to say to a preacher. So, my name is Jared Ayers. I pastor Liberty Church around the corner. We love this city and I'm glad to pray together with so many people that care so deeply for Philadelphia as well. So, pray together with me. Oh Lord, our governor, how exalted is your name in all the earth! By your prophets, you have taught your people to seek the welfare of the city to which you have sent them, and dazzled us with visions of that holy city to which the nations would bring their glory. We commend now Philadelphia, our city, to your care, that it might flourish, free from violence, ruin, and decay. We pray for all of Philadelphia's civic leaders, here and elsewhere, that they would serve with undivided integrity, wise skill, and a deep concern for others. We pray that the neighborhoods of this city will be communities of joy and peace, and will be emancipated from poverty, prejudice, and oppression. And we ask that in this place, peace would prevail with righteousness, justice with order, and that women and men from the many cultures of this great place would find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord, who reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much for those inspiring words. And Pastor, again, thank you so much for those inspiring words. Okay. Before we start our proceedings, I would ask one thing. If anyone has a cellphone, any type of electronic device that makes any noise whatsoever, I would ask that you please turn it off or turn it on vibrate. Thank you very much for your cooperation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 25, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 25, 2016, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of 2016, February. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is requests for leaves of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. You will see the annual mayor's budget in addition to the traditional council proceedings on our Thursday session. So, I really hope you enjoy yourself today. I hope you enjoy yourself that you not only come back next week, but you come back next year when the mayor has his budget. Again, thank you so much for your participation. What I'd like to say, we have many distinguished guests and visitors here, more than I can probably call, because I'm afraid I will miss someone, but we do have all of the heads of all of the various departments in the government, all our commissioners. We have a number of dignitaries throughout, elected officials, both city and state, from our senate, from our house, and please, I apologize if I don't call out the individual names, because I know I'm gonna mess up and not call somebody. Plus, they didn't give me the script that reflects who's here. All right? So, again, thank you for your cooperation and your understanding. At this time, we will move towards our communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home World Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill numbers 16007, 160136, and 160137. And I am pleased to advise you that on February 26, 2016, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at a session on February 25, 2016, Bill number 16009. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the 45th and Sampson Urban Manuela area identified by house number and street address as 46 South 44th Street, and a resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia, covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021, and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, and an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscals, 2017 through 2022 inclusive, and an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2017 capital budget, and an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017, and an ordinance amending Section 191801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia, and an ordinance amending Section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia, and an ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates, and an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter, 194100, entitled Sugar-Sweetened Beverage Tax, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. At this time, we'll have our introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one bill this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Decker, that's one privileged resolution.
One privilege. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and supporting women and girls throughout the world on the occasion of International Women's Day on Tuesday, March 8, 2016.
And that resolution will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have one non-privileged resolution, and I also feel that we should recognize former Mayor Street and ask him the question, "Do you have an NTI bill for us?" Sorry, couldn't resist it.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. You always have my back. So, that is at least one person that I will not be in trouble with. Thank you. That resolution...
A non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the 45th and Sampson Urban Manuela area identified by house number and street address as 46 South 44th Street.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one bill this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Decker, that's one privileged resolution.
One privilege. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and supporting women and girls throughout the world on the occasion of International Women's Day on Tuesday, March 8, 2016.
And that resolution will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have one non-privileged resolution, and I also feel that we should recognize former Mayor Street and ask him the question, "Do you have an NTI bill for us?" Sorry, couldn't resist it.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. You always have my back. So, that is at least one person that I will not be in trouble with. Thank you. That resolution...
A non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the 45th and Sampson Urban Manuela area identified by house number and street address as 46 South 44th Street.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance legalizing an existing six-foot wooden fence at 841 through 43 North Opel Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I offer one resolution and seven bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2017 through 22 inclusive, and ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2017 capital budget, and an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017, and an ordinance amending Section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia, and an ordinance amending Section 191801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia, and an ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates, and an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter, 194100, entitled Sugar-Sweetened Beverage Tax.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those seven bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution providing for the approval of the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021.
And that will also be referred to committee. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
An ordinance amending Chapter 14, 300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administration and Procedures by adding certain provisions regarding registered community organizations.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 1900 and 2000 blocks of Cecilby Moore Street, Marsha Moore Way.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution congratulating and honoring the Pennsylvania chapter of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women on the 30th anniversary of the Madam C.J. Walker Awards Luncheon.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberg.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to consider Senate Bill 95 introduced by Senator Larry Farnese on March 31, 2015 regarding anti-slap strategic lawsuit against public participation legislation.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to address the alarmingly high rate of HIV cases projected by the Centers for Disease Control at a time when preventative measures are well-developed but not accessed by the most vulnerable populations, particularly in the African-American community.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills, no resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and I will pivot back to recognizing some of our very special guests. At this time, I would like to recognize Sheriff Joe Williams, State Senator Anthony Williams, Representative Jason Dawkins, State Representative Jordan Harris, our good friends in labor, Pete Matthews, and John McNeese are here, and Brian Donatucci, our registered Wills, Al Smith, our city commissioner, Lisa Dealy, another city commissioner, and our district attorney, Seth Williams. This time, if I have missed anyone's name, it is clearly not my fault, because I am reading from the script. So, thank you very much, and again, thank all of you for coming here today. Our next order of business will be our reports on committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill number 160018, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant Rent Control by requiring the tenants of certain multifamily buildings be provided with a written disclosure of the building policy on smoking in individual dwelling units under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it as considered, and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading on this day of Bill number 160018.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills number 160018. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rule has been deemed to have had its first reading will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160154, 160164, and all other resolutions or bills are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session as required by law. If there is anyone who has an interest in testifying on a bill or resolution today... Oh, okay. Sorry. I forgot to mention Dr. William Height. I'm sorry. I saw this... Listen, I saw you were testifying today on a bill or resolution, and I'm like, oh, I'm sorry. Doctor, sorry about the oversight. Thank you so much. If anyone is interested in testifying on a bill or resolution today, you can sign up at the table to my left if you have not already done so. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There is a device on that podium when the light turns green. It will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Robert Taylor.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Robert Taylor of the Transport Workers Union, Local 700, and WPEB 88.1 co-host on the Jasper Jones Show. I am commenting on Resolution 160157, expressing council support for an amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution that would authorize different real estate tax rates in cities and school districts, and conveying council's opposition to a provision that would mandate a reduction in other business or wage taxes. I do not support this resolution. The resolution actually reveals that taxes are too high, and that city council would do well by the citizens to not seek this amendment. The citizens are taxed enough with AVI and other ceaseless tax increases in recent years. There's no good reason that the people should be taxed out of their homes, businesses, and jobs. Quote, "When men are oppressed more by taxes than by enemies, taxes are unconstitutional." Thomas Paine's Rights of Men. The school district is out of control and needs to learn how to live in this $2 billion, $500 million to $3 billion annual budget. In fact, the school district says submit a complete audit, which according to the weekly press is 9/1813 paper, state auditors have warned of accounting problems at the Philadelphia School District since 1987. It states, quote, "A district's failure to accurately maintain and report its membership and attendance records data calls into question the legitimacy and appropriateness of the bulk of its state taxpayer funding. Meanwhile, our children don't have sufficient school nurses, books, pencils, toilet paper, year after year. This must end. Council members took a note to the Constitution for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and to the people or the citizens therein. It is time that the citizens get a break. They have suffered enough at the hands of the so-called stakeholders that aren't even mentioned in the Constitution at all. Instead of countless new taxes, why not uphold the inherent rights of mankind? God bless Philadelphia, and as Joe Donatell often says, let's get to work." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160154.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city-owned lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 20th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160154 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, 160164.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city-owned lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 11th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman, I think you wanted to make reference to a member that I neglected to mention from our labor force. Can you do that first for me, please?
Sure. Certainly want to recognize Fred Wright from DC 47 as here.
All right. Fred Wright, all right, sir. Sitting in the corner over there. We didn't see you. Sorry.
Okay.
And please make a motion on the resolution.
Absolutely. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160164 is adopted. And that concludes that. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and supporting women and girls throughout the world on the occasion of International Women's Day on Tuesday, March 8, 2016, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating and honoring the Pennsylvania chapter of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women on the 30th anniversary of the Madam C.J. Walker Awards Luncheon introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution, and just needed to note that it's co-sponsored by all of the women of city council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Make a second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to address the alarmingly high rate of HIV cases projected by the Centers for Disease Control at a time when preventative measures are well-developed and not accessed by the most vulnerable populations, particularly in the African-American community, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar. And... Is he ready? Time has come for us to consider the mayor's presentation of his annual budget message. The Philadelphia Home World Charter states that "The mayor shall submit to council no later than 90 days before the end of the fiscal year his operating budget message and proposed operating budget ordinance for the ensuing fiscal year. At the same time, the mayor shall submit to council the recommended capital program and capital budget as received from the City Planning Commission to the extent approved by the mayor. I now appoint the following committee to escort the mayor into council chambers: Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman O'Neal, and Councilman Ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to introduce the mayor of the City of Philadelphia, Mayor James F. Kennedy.
First of all, I want to say it is certainly humbling and a wonderful experience to be back in this chamber that I spent... back in this chamber that I spent such a long time in as mayor. Thank you. I want to thank the council president and for all my colleagues in council for welcoming me to speak today. It feels really good to be home. I spent about just half my life in this chamber. I started in nineteen ninety-two under then-council president Street, right over there, and I've since had the privilege to work with two more great council presidents, Anna Severna and now Council President Clark. I've also had the distinct pleasure over the years to getting to learn a lot from all of you. Through the work we've done together, you have helped shape me, and I believe you will see that impact reflected in our first budget together. In this budget, we continue to try to protect the rights of our most vulnerable. Councilman Greenly has been a consistent advocate for the rights of Philadelphians, both through paid sick leave and battling wage theft. I am proud that this budget proposes an additional position to assist with the enforcement of these very important laws. Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez has also been a critical partner in advancing the rates of our cities undocumented. Over the next year, I look forward to working with her and the rest of the city council to develop a plan for a municipal I D. Councilmembers O'Neil and Heenan have also gone to bat many times to get our firefighters the life-saving tools that they need. This year, thanks in no small part to their efforts, I'm excited to announce that our six-year plan will provide over eighty million dollars for the replacement of old malfunctioning vehicles and desperately needed facility improvements like roof replacements. Our police officers will also be getting more resources to protect and serve the citizens of Philadelphia under this budget proposal. In addition to repairing infrastructure in our police district stations, this budget equips our police force with body-worn cameras. As Councilman Jones pointed out passionately during hearings last year, body-worn cameras have been extremely successful in reducing the use of force and reducing the police abuse allegations all across the country. I am confident that the expansion of the body-worn cameras in consultation with our local F O P in Philadelphia will further the admirable community policing efforts led by our great Commissioner Richard Ross. This budget also increases community safety by dedicating resources to preventing traffic-related fatalities. As Councilwoman Bass has consistently pointed out, it is unacceptable that we treat these deaths as a fact of life in Philadelphia. Working with key stakeholders, our new office of Complete Streets and the Managing Director's Office, will identify changes that we can make, whether it to be better lining or signage or a change in traffic flow, to protect that child walking to school and the cyclist just trying to get to work. The Streets Department and L and I will also work to advance our Vision Zero goals by enhancing their right-of-way activities. The recent explosion of development has significantly increased sidewalk and street closures. This budget would allow us to ensure safe travel around those closures and to better enforce penalties against those that are illegal, raising revenue for the city and preventing these dangerous encroachments in the first place. This budget will also continue city council's efforts to ensure that the twenty-second and market collapse will never happen again. Today, we are proposing funding for additional code enforcement unit and for two additional L and I district offices. These offices would be strategically located in areas of the city that are experiencing the most construction activity, so that we're increasing oversight of these construction projects and allowing businesses to get permits more efficiently. This budget also supports small businesses and commercial corridors by expanding the community life improvement program all across the city. As many of you already know, CLIP manages graffiti, vacant lot cleanups, and other instances of blight that can make the difference between a community on the rise and one mired This investment will specifically increase vacant lot and exterior property abatements by five thousand over the next year. CLIP also serves as a critical workforce development tool, allowing folks who have gone astray to pay back their debt to the community while gaining professional experience and skills. Additionally, this investment would bring in one hundred thousand dollars in new revenue for the city through the collection activities of CLIP employees. As councilmembers Parker and Squilla have been saying for a long time, CLIP has a pretty incredible return on investment for both the city and our neighborhoods. Thanks to the efforts of councilmembers Heenan and Talbomberger, this budget also supports our small businesses by establishing a line item for the storefront improvement program, which will help fund approximately one hundred upgrades this year. Research shows that facade improvements lead to additional foot traffic, increased revenue, and the creation of new jobs. But our commercial corridors almost lost this successful longstanding program after a change in federal regulations. While Councilmember Heenan successfully fought last year for a temporary funding measure, the city's commitment to our commercial corridors should never be in doubt, which is why we are so proud to introduce a stable funding source in this new budget. In addition to growing local businesses, we will also continue to expand Philadelphia's international profile. I want to thank Councilman O. in particular for all his work in promoting Philadelphia globally. We will soon be hiring a Director of International Investment, whose job will be built on the councilman's efforts, increasing export activity and attracting new businesses to locate here in Philadelphia. This budget also proposes several measures in line with Councilmembers Squilla and Dom's focus, laser focus, on decreasing tax delinquency. I'm proud to say that we already expect to collect sixty-nine million dollars more in additional delinquent tax revenue over the next five years. And to help address this problem further, we're proposing to increase the number of taxpayer service representatives and to add technical programming to revenue's I T system. The budget also addresses systemic issues in the city's mailroom, which, as Controller Butkiewicz recently brought to light, have wasted taxpayers' dollars and delayed critical communications to Philadelphians on everything from subpoenas to water bills. While the backlog of the mailroom has been eliminated, funding will be allocated to consult with industry experts and to hire additional staff, so this issue does not recur. These programs are important, but by themselves do not change the status quo. I've been listening to budget addresses in this chamber for over two decades, and while we've had great mayors who have done many important things, the core challenge facing our city has not changed, and that's just unacceptable. While over the past five years, city funding for our schools has gone up nearly four hundred million dollars annually, funding cuts from Harrisburg continue to deprive our children of the education they deserve. Councilmembers Gim and Blackwell's recent hearings on the state of our schools have unearthed shocking and troubling statistics. Nearly eighty percent of all Philadelphia schools, including charters, are in Pennsylvania's lowest performance tiers. And currently, forty-six percent of our kids enter kindergarten unprepared. Our failure to properly educate our children has reverberated throughout our economy. Two-thirds of Philadelphians currently looking for work test at the fourth to eighth grade level in reading, writing, and math, leaving them largely unable to secure family-sustaining jobs. And that's just people who haven't given up the job search altogether. Philadelphia has the second largest percentage, second highest percentage, of work-age residents who are out of the labor force. Only Detroit has a higher percentage. A report that just came out Tuesday also found that nearly half of Philadelphians live in what are classified as distressed zip codes. In these zip codes, there is high poverty, few people with high school degrees, and marginal of any increase in businesses in recent years. If we ever want the mayor's budget address to be about something other than our failing school system and its repercussions, then we need to implement serious, radical, and ambitious policies. So this year, I'm proposing five interlinking programs that together will create the real change Philadelphia's want and deserve. The first is pre-K. Through an investment of two hundred and fifty-six million dollars in combination with state and federal funding, we could have twenty-five thousand quality pre-K seats in Philadelphia over the next five years. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown was among the first to educate me on the importance of affordable quality pre-K, especially for our low-income communities. Because most of a child's brain development occurs in the first five years of life, quality early education gives our most vulnerable children the tools to compete with their wealthier peers. In fact, a range of studies shows that children who participate in quality pre-K are far likely to succeed than those who don't. A study by the William Penn Foundation found that the percentage of four-year-olds with strong academic and social skills more than tripled after participating in the state's pre-K program. A Chicago-based study found that children who participated in high-quality preschool were twenty percent less likely to be arrested for a felony or incarcerated as young adults than those who did not attend. By age thirty, individuals served by a North Carolina Early Learning Program were four times more likely to graduate college and forty-two percent more likely to be consistently employed. In addition to improving our school district's academic outcomes, quality pre-K also has positive fiscal benefits for our entire school system by reducing the need for special The school district currently spends an average of twenty-three thousand dollars for one child to receive special education services for just one year. According to the city's pre-K Commission, Philadelphia could save approximately five point six million dollars per grade cohort if all children were enrolled in quality pre-K. There are also very real economic benefits for both small businesses and overall job creation. A report frequently cited by the Economy League found that for every one dollar spent on pre-K, at least a dollar seventy-nine is generated in local spending. That same study also found that for every twenty jobs created in the Pennsylvania early education industry, five unrelated jobs were also created outside of that sector. Pre-K is also essential for stabilizing our existing workforce. If working parents do not have reliable childcare, then they can't be reliable employees. And if they can't be reliable employees, then they can't properly care for their children. The second policy we're proposing to bring real change to Philadelphia is the creation of twenty-five community schools. And I want to thank the council president for his leadership on this issue and for work he we need to advance this initiative. As many of you are already aware, community schools are public schools, where a dedicated coordinator directly integrates largely already-existing social services into that school, so children can access them easily. In many cases, these services are also available to the larger community, making the school a hub of the neighborhood. This helps increase parental engagement and community investment in the success of the school. The services provided in each school will vary based on the needs of that community, but the idea is the same. If we can address the things happening outside the classroom that keep our students from learning, whether that be poverty, or hunger, or health care, then we can improve the lives and futures of our kids. The effectiveness of the community school strategy, particularly in low-income, low-performing districts, can be seen all over the country. There is a community high school in one of Los Angeles's highest-need neighborhoods, where ninety-nine percent of the students graduate and go on to college. And Cincinnati closed its racial and socioeconomic achievement gap by ten percent, thanks to the community school model. The third policy that will make a real difference for both our education system and our neighborhoods is a three hundred and fifty million dollar investment in our community infrastructure. There is not a council member in this room who hasn't seen firsthand the devastating impacts of underinvestment in parks, rec centers, and libraries. On Monday, I was at Verre Recreation Center with Councilman Johnson, listening to parents who had lost their children to gun violence. And I couldn't help but think, if we had the resources to actually make Verre a center of the community, then these parents wouldn't even be here. They'd be in the other room watching the kids playing basketball. And the facts back that up. Study after study shows that we can improve the public safety of our neighborhoods, expand educational opportunities for our children, and create jobs all by just investing in our existing parks, libraries, and recreation centers. The Department of Parks and Recreation, including the free library, are the largest provider of after-school programs in the city. And according to the National Center for Educational Statistics, students who do extracurricular activities are more likely to have a higher attendance rate and G P A than those who don't. Investments in parks have also been shown to reduce crime. When the city and the Fairmount Park Conservancy invested five million dollars in Hunting Park, crime went down eighty-nine percent within a half-mile radius of the park over the next three years. These investments also help create jobs and find employment. A third of the visits to our libraries see each year are Philadelphians seeking assistance in the job application process. Additionally, fixing these facilities and parks will create hundreds of construction jobs for working families, and the improved infrastructure may also support additional programming jobs for people in the community. Investing in community infrastructure also builds on the council president's proposal to spend one hundred and fifty million dollars on increasing energy efficiency in city-owned buildings. As the council president has rightly pointed out, investments in energy efficiency create middle-class jobs and help the city save money that can be reinvested in other critical initiatives, like education and public safety. So as our fourth policy initiative, I am proposing issuing a one hundred million dollar bond to make energy-efficient infrastructure improvements to branch libraries, police stations, firehouses, and other city properties. The fifth and final policy I'm proposing is an additional twenty-six million dollar investment in our pension fund over the next five years. Currently, our pension fund, as you all know, is less than fifty percent funded. Over the next five years, we will spend three point four billion dollars trying to address that deficit. That's nearly the cost of our current annual budget. As a result, and as a result, we'll have significantly less to spend on other programs Philadelphians need and want. Now, I won't pretend that this twenty-six million dollar investment will solve all our pension funds underlying problems. Councilman Derek Green and I have talked about this at length, and I know that we still must commit ourselves to working with all of our unions. The first test of that will come this June, and we are committed to negotiating a fair and equitable contract with District Council Thirty-Three. But making this twenty-six million dollar investment is still an important indication to the credit agencies, our lenders, and most importantly, to the city workforce, that the mayor and city council are committed to addressing this serious problem. I am proposing to pay for this pension investment, as well as for quality pre-K, community schools, and investments in community infrastructure, and energy efficiency by levying a three-cent tax on sugary drink distributors. And as some of you may already have heard, Big Soda isn't thrilled about that at all. Now, I don't have anything against our city's large distributors or even the Big Soda companies. I think they're good people. We just disagree on this issue. See, the problem is that Big Soda charges our citizens, small businesses, and distributors much, much more than it costs for them to make the soda in the first place. And then they use some of those profits to fund lobbyists who come here and say that the tax on sugary drinks will cost jobs and devastate small businesses. And they're pretty persuasive. So persuasive, they even got me to believe them five years ago. And I'll tell you the line that really got me four years ago was the claim that this tax would hurt low-income minority communities. And that's really a concerning claim for me. But the truth is that soda companies are the ones actually targeting their advertising at low-income minority communities in the first place. A two thousand and nine study found that lower-income African-Americans in Latino neighborhoods have far more outdoor ads for sugary drinks than higher-income neighborhoods or white low-income neighborhoods. ads for sugary drinks than higher-income neighborhoods or white, low-income neighborhoods. Researchers at Yale also found that African-American youth see 80% to 90% more ads for sugary drinks than their white counterparts. The other concerning claim about this tax is that it will cause an unemployment crisis. But we know that's false because we just went through that a number of years ago when we passed the liquor tax. Employment did not slow down after the liquor tax was instated. In fact, Philadelphia's restaurant and bar scene has grown by leaps and bounds. Now, the two largest unionized beverage truck driver employers in Philadelphia are Pepsi and Coke. So it's easy to think that when the demand decreases for Pepsi and Coke, those drivers may be out of a job. But Pepsi and Coke drivers deliver all the products under the Pepsi and Coke label, which includes not only sugary drinks, but also bottled water and the dozens of other products they have created that would be exempt from these taxes. This tax also won't hurt the restaurant industry because restaurants are already trending away from the reliance on soda profits. I have a large restaurateur in the city who called me yesterday to talk about this issue and told me he gives the soda away. Applebee's was the first family dining restaurant chain to remove soda from its children's menus, joining fast-food chains Burger King, McDonald's, Wendy's, and Dairy Queen. And furthermore, this tax won't wipe out small business. Small grocers, bodegas, convenience stores are already stocking and selling non-sugary beverages. And they are doing that because customers' preferences are already changing, even without a tax. During the last two decades, U.S. full-calorie soda sales have dropped by over 25%, while sales of bottled water, which both Pepsi and Coke also sell, have shot through the roof. Just in Philadelphia, between 2007 and 2013, daily soda intake dropped by 16%. Additionally, the programs this tax will fund, like pre-K and investments in parks, libraries, or rec centers, will actually help small business. Childcare and early-learning professionals generally spend most of their earnings locally. As I mentioned earlier, for every $1 invested in pre-K, in Pennsylvania, a total of $1.79 is generated in total spending within the state. Furthermore, most childcare centers are small, minority, women-owned businesses, and this investment will go a long way towards helping them grow and expand. The budget I'm proposing today also contains other policies to help small business. In addition to the storefront improvement program I spoke about earlier, I'm also proposing the reduction of the business income and receipts tax to 6.15% and including an exemption of $100,000. During that same time, we also plan to reduce the wage tax to 3.33% for nonresidents and 3.73% for residents, bringing that tax to its lowest rate since 1975. But none of that can happen. Not the stimulus, not the reduction in taxes, not the pre-K, not the community schools, not desperately needed investments in parks, rec centers, and libraries if we don't pass this tax. There is simply nowhere else to find the revenue. We all know we can't raise property taxes again, God forbid, who wanted to go through that one more time? We've already raised them four times in the last five years. And it's simply not fair to ask our homeowners, or any other Philadelphian for that matter, to pay more while large soda companies and wealthy distributors are making incredible We also know we can't find this money in the budget. While we've combed this budget for savings and even recovered additional tax delinquent revenue, our budget is so tight due to the cuts made during the recession and the size of our pension obligations, the money just isn't there. Pilots, while still worth exploring, are also not going to get us the recurring revenue we need to fund such large-scale programs. Even in Boston, where pilots are very, very successful, the city receives just half of what we need to operate pre-K on an annual basis. But the most persuasive argument of all for the tax is that Philadelphians elected us to implement the very programs this revenue will fund. Is that my mother up there? Last year was the education election. The voters approved a pre-K commission with an 80% mandate, dramatically outperforming... dramatically outperforming any other ballot measure. And at forum after forum after forum after forum, we listened to Philadelphians beg for safe community spaces, family-sustaining jobs, and quality neighborhood schools. We can give our citizens all those things with just one tax. And I know that one tax can make some very wealthy and very powerful people very, very upset. But I've seen this council take on special interests before, and I know together we can do it again. And I just want to give you a personal story of something that's happened in the last couple of months that just has impacted me to a great point. I was recently visiting a quality pre-K in Mantua, and was sitting in one of those little chairs with the little kids sit in, hoping that it wouldn't break. And two little four-year-old boys came over to me, unafraid, bright smiles, engaged, articulate, happy. And we chatted a little bit about how a school, and how do you like your teachers, and how do you like, and they liked everything. And they were taking in all the press, and they were sponging everything in. So much they were taking in that one little boy reached up and grabbed my nose and said, "Man, you got a big nose." Said, "Very, very observant, I appreciate that." Now let me go, two days later. Two days later, I attended a visit, I had a visit, at the Penny Pack School. Penny Pack School is a high school in the prison, where young men who have been charged with serious crimes are being held without, before trial, but they have to go to high school. And I walked into a classroom, and there were four young men in prison garb, reading Macbeth, reading the parts of Macbeth out loud to each other. I walked into another classroom, and there were three kids, very, three young men standing, and they're very proud, to explain to me what a parabola is. And they had a model of one. And by the time they got done explaining it to me, I still didn't understand what it was. But I knew that they understood what it was. And after that, before I, before I left, I sat in a group, a circle, with those young men, and we talked about their life, their future, their situation. And we're just chatting, I mean, it's hard to talk when you're in that circumstance. And a young man said to me, "Mayor, may I say something?" I said, "Absolutely." He said, "This is the best school I've ever attended. The best school he ever attended in jail. It is our responsibility to those two four-year-old little boys and to every four-year-old, little boy and girl in this city, to not let them go on the road to Penny Pack, but get them Thank you all.
Folks, we, we still have to, I'm gonna ask all of you, you know, if you want to leave, you gotta leave quietly, because we still have to wrap up the council session. Just trying to let people get out, but... So if you want to leave, please leave very quietly so we can conclude the council session. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Right now, are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Change your mind, sir? Any speeches on the part of the majority, there being those... Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I just want to say, after that presentation, I have nothing else to say.
All right, okay. For the mayor, we'd be glad to hear that. That concludes the speeches. We'll now recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 10, 2016 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, it's been moved in probably second. The council stand is adjourned until Thursday, March 10, 2016 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, thank you all very much.